Good evening. Welcome to the regular Monday meeting of May 20th, 2013, here in council chambers. Just to let you know, the council did have an executive session at 6:00 PM regarding labor negotiations, and we'll be having an executive session immediately following the meeting to discuss litigation. First item on our agenda is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Town Clerk?
Counselor Drake.
Here.
Counselor Hurley.
Here.
Counselor Kotkin.
Here.
Counselor Menusos is unable to attend tonight. Counselor McAllister.
Here.
Counselor Montanari.
Here.
And Counselor Roberts.
Here.
And Deputy Mayor Council.
Present.
And Chairperson Hammond.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a treat tonight, having the Weathersfield Historical Society here to show us a short movie. This is from the 1934 Weathersfield Tursent Teneri Celebration that they recently restored and applied voice to, and we thought it would be very interesting for the group to see.
Good evening. I'm Amy Woodorf. I'm the Executive Director of Weathersfield Historical Society, and we're so pleased to show you this film tonight. This was discovered in our vault. It was a film that was taken in 1934 of portions of the Tursent Teneri Parade and Pageant by E. Miles Standish. It was donated by Jared Butler Standish, and we were able to restore it with a grant from the Film Preservation Foundation and apply the sound to it. It's a soundtrack voiceover explaining what is happening. Our President Candace Holmes provided the voice, and Channel 14, our local television station, provided the editing, and we're very grateful to them for that. Just keep in mind when you're watching this, this is 1934. This is the depths of the Depression. Unemployment is at 25 percent. Hitler is in power in Germany. Fortunately, prohibition had just been repealed, but there are so many people in this production. These are the residents of Weathersfield, Rocky Hill, Newington, and Glastonbury coming together. The music you will hear is not the original performance, but it is the music that was played. It was played by the Governor's Footguard Band. So this is just a short part of what was a three-day celebration. The pageant itself probably lasted about an hour and a half or two hours, and they had three performances of it. So do please enjoy. I will pass to the council members. This is the original program and the list of people who were involved, and there's many, many people if they would like to look at it.
The following recording was donated to Weathersfield Historical Society by Jared Butler Standish and filmed captured by E. Miles Standish. The film was originally a 16-millimeter reel film that was preserved and converted by Film Technologies, Inc., with funding from the National Film Preservation Foundation. This is the recording of the Tursent Teneri Celebration that occurred in 1934. The first part of the film is of the Weathersfield Tursent Teneri Parade, which took place on June 9th, 1934, starting at 2:00 PM. There were six divisions of the parade: escort comprising the military units, Weathersfield, Glastonbury, Rocky Hill, Newington, and the Float Division. The parade begins with the Marshal Comrade Henry L. Langton, the only surviving Civil War veteran from Weathersfield, accompanied by Parade Chief of Staff Major Ervin E. Partridge, Jr., and members of the Marshal's staff. Quick to follow is the Escort Division comprised of the military units. The first unit is the 169th Infantry of the Connecticut National Guard, with Lieutenant Colonel Joseph P. Nolan commanding, marching with the 169th Infantry Band. Next are the 29th Fleet Division, 5th Battalion, and the U.S. Naval Reserve. Following the Naval Reserve is the impressive 1st Company Governor's Footguard and Band, with Major Alvin Waldo Hyde commanding Company 1. Next, we see the Matituck Fife and Drum Corps and the Putnam Phalanx, commanded by Major John J. Roche, commanding the Veteran Corps, and Major Leslie L. Pierce, commanding the Active Corps. Following the Escort Division is the Weathersfield Division, with Captain Edwin H. May, Division Commander, and Captain Warren G. Wilsey, Adjutant. The celebrated Colts Band leads the Weathersfield Division. Following Colts Band is the Russell K. Born Post #23 American Legion and the American The Boy Scouts of America Troops #33 and 50, and Girl Scouts of America Troops #1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 are representing the younger generation. Weathersfield Fire Department, the oldest volunteer company in the country, marching with their hats to their chests, saluting the flag, conclude the Weathersfield Division. As Weathersfield's first daughter town, the Glastonbury Division is next. Only the Glastonbury Fife and Drum Corps are filmed. The Rocky Hill Division is next, led by Major Nathan C. Avery, Division Commander, and James Henderson, Jr., Adjutant. The Junior Drum Corps of Campilio Holmes Post #123 American Legion represents Rocky Hill, along with the Row Luck Post #8 American Legion Drum Corps. The last daughter town represented is Newington, with Lieutenant Harold I. Dreyer, Division Commander, and Lieutenant James F. Simpson, Adjutant. The Eddie Glover Post #6 American Legion Drum Corps of New Britain is followed by the Redmond's Boys Band of Collinsville. The last division of the parade, the Float Division, begins with the Float representing John Oldham and his companions visiting Soag. Appearing next is Sergeant Richard Beckley, purchasing Beckley Quarter from Chief Terramugas, followed by Hugh Wells, Town Crier, and Sergeant of the Train Band of Weathersfield in 1667. Mr. and Mrs. Edward Deming and Mr. and Mrs. Harry L. Wells, representing the first settlers of Griswoldville, are followed by two outriders. The Griswoldville Float reproduces the old houses and mills of early days and is sponsored by its residents. The Old Elm shaves the doorways of four periods of Weathersfield history, followed by a float of an early schoolroom. The next float depicts the stringing and bunching of onions shipped out of the Rocky Hill port, sponsored by the Rocky Hill Grange. Next, we see Sophia Woodhouse weaving her superior-quality Leghorn bonnets, sponsored by the Girl Scouts. Reverend Joseph Emerson's Female Seminary, housed in the Old Academy, sponsored by the Women's Saturday Afternoon Club of Weathersfield, is next. A float entitled "An Event in the History of Weathersfield," sponsored by the Sacred Heart Roman Catholic Church of Weathersfield, celebrates our revolutionary history. Men of the four towns who served their country in 1861, 1898, and 1917 are on the next float, sponsored by Rocky Hill Veterans Home. A sweet-smelling float entitled "A Rose Garden" appears next, sponsored by the Garden Club of Weathersfield. The last float of the parade is a ship built by boys of Weathersfield and sponsored by the Sea Scouts of Weathersfield. The next event we see on the film is the Tursent Teneri Pageant, "The Leaves of the Tree," written and directed by Doris Campbell-Halsworth. The pageant was performed on June 8th and 9th, 1934, at Cove Park. The following recording does not show the play in its entirety, but provides excerpts. Pike Wog, 1630. The Wongung are holding a ceremony. They are attacked by the Pequots, who are finally repelled after they have wounded and killed some of the warriors and taken captives. Soag calls his council together, and they decide to send representatives to ask the white men to settle in Connecticut. The girls and women mourn over the dead, and the warriors carry them away. Boston, 1631. Governor Winthrop calls a meeting to receive the visitors from Connecticut. The Wongung display hemp and skins and invite the Englishmen to settle on the fertile land near the Great River. John Oldham and Samuel Hall urge acceptance of the invitation, but Governor Winthrop refuses. Despite this, John Oldham promises Jack Straw that he will come. Pike Wog, 1633. Wild animals and birds have made their homes along the river. They frolic undisturbed until the approach of the white settlers sends them scurrying away in a panic of fear. Summer, 1634. The Ten Adventurers, led by John Oldham, arrive with their horses, cows, and equipment. They take possession of the land with Soag's approval and name the place Watertown and June, 1635. The adventurers are hard at work in the meadow when a boat arrives from Massachusetts, bringing their families and new settlers. A happy reunion follows with a prayer of thanks for their safe arrival, led by Reverend John Sherman. Weathersfield, 1637. Some of the townspeople are at work in the field near their homes when a horseman warns them of approaching Indians. They are not greatly alarmed, and before they have gathered up their tools, the Pequots are upon them. Five men and women are killed and two Swain girls are captured. Men arrive with guns as the Pequots are disappearing, but are cautioned not to shoot as they might hit the girls. The women try to revive those who are wounded, and the men carry them away. Lieutenant Seeley calls the men together and orders a watch set. Mr. and Mrs. Swain set out for Saybrook. Soag is accused of complicity in the massacre, and he moves away to the South. The men start for Hartford to enlist the other towns to wage war against the Pequots. Church Division, 1639. Reverend John Sherman calls church members together to choose a settled pastor. They are interrupted by a crowd accompanying Andrew Ward and William Swain, who bring news of the first election held by the General Court under the fundamental laws. The church members cannot agree upon a pastor, so Reverend Sherman makes known his intention to start a new settlement at Weepawang and Reverend Denton his at Ripawangs. October, 1687. Sir Edmund Andros and his British soldiers embark in boats to cross the river. He is welcomed by Captains Talcott and Chester, Reverend Dr. Gersham Balkly, Reverend Woodbridge, the Train Band, and a group of young ladies. Some among the company resent the arrival of a governor appointed by the king, but a goodly number go with him as escort to Hartford. Newington Church, 1722. The people of West Farms have formed the separate parish of Newington. On the road from New Haven to Weathersfield, September 19, 1765. Stamp Master Jared Ingersoll from New Haven is met on his way to Hartford by four men in Weathersfield who challenge him and then follow until he is surrounded by a large group May, 1781. Ladies and boys of Weathersfield make elaborate preparations for the visit of Washington with his aides and the French officers. All the townspeople gather to welcome him. Washington arrives escorted by Governor Trumbull, Colonel Wattsworth, Colonel Webb, and Colonel Chester. He is saluted, invited to the Webb House and to the concert to be given after the French arrive. Washington tells the people of his purpose to end the war as soon as possible. Washington confers with the French generals and presents plans for ending the war that are approved by the French and American officers. Governor Trumbull invites the company to dinner at the tavern, where they are escorted by the girls of the towns. Dance of the Flowers and Vegetables represents the seed industry. Rocky Hill, May 1843. The men and women, girls and boys of the town, are arranging goods to take to the ship they are expecting. They sing as they work. Rodrick Grimes comes with a post from Hartford and announces that the legislature has declared Rocky Hill an independent town. There is great rejoicing. The Tursent Teneri Celebration consisted of several events, including the parade and pageant, that were representative of the culture of the early 20th century. It is important to remember that the Weathersfield Tursent Teneri was held in 1934, and that the interpretation of history is constantly changing. Not all the events depicted in the film are historically or politically accurate, but instead represent the historical interpretation of the time. The pageant and parade should be placed in historical context as a glimpse into history
I hope you enjoyed that. This will be on our website for people to view whenever they like. It will also be shown on Channel 14. So thank you for watching.
Thank you, Amy, for bringing this forward. I think it is especially timefull. Mr. Spelacy is here with us tonight to talk about the upcoming Memorial Day activities, and this really demonstrated some of those groups involved with this celebration. Although Memorial Day is in a different context, but very similar organizations. Thank you. Next on the agenda is, we have two hearings tonight for public comment. The first one is 1A, 31 Kimberly Road, a hearing for a resolution requesting approval of the abandonment of a portion of 2-Rod Highway abutting 31 Kimberly Lane. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this hearing item?
Kevin Martin, 31 Kimberly Lane. The resolution is there. We had finished building the house about two years ago and had approached the town to plant trees as a privacy screen to protect us from Kits Lane. And through various, I guess, redirects and different channels, it's finally come to you guys now for a vote, so I'd appreciate it if we could get it resolved. It's been about two years, and we're just waiting to put up a fence.
Okay. Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this particular hearing item? Anyone else to speak on this particular hearing item? I declare this hearing item closed. Number 1B, the CPACE Program, hearing for a resolution approving the Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy CPACE Agreement. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this hearing item? Any members of the public wishing to speak on this hearing item? Anyone? Okay, this hearing item is closed. Next on the agenda is general comments. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak?
Larry Spelacy, 215 Pine Lane. But I'm here this evening to, as the representative of the Memorial Day Parade Committee, I'd just like to point out to the town council and also to the general community that the parade is scheduled for Saturday, May 25th. It starts at 9:00 AM in the morning. It forms up at the State Motor Vehicles Department on State Street. Parade starts, it goes down State Street to the intersection of Hartford Avenue and Knott Street. We have a brief ceremony at the Knott Street Memorial. The parade then continues on Garden Street, a little bit on Knott Street, and then takes a left-hand turn on the Garden Street, goes down Garden Street until it reaches Church Street. We take a left turn at Church Street and go down Church to Main Street, a right turn on Main through the center of all Weathersfield, a beautiful historic district, and then when we reach Garden Street again, we take a left-hand turn and go down Garden to the Broad Street Green, and the parade culminates at the conclusion of the Broad Street area at the beginning of the Village Cemetery. I'm very pleased to announce that we have a very exciting line of march this year. We're featuring five bands. As you just heard, one of the bands that's coming for the first time to Weathersfield is the Governor's Footguard, which is a beautiful, large contingent of marching band. We feature, of course, the Weathersfield High School Band, the Colonel Chester Band, which are two local groups here, Colonel Chester Fife and Drum Corps, and then Buckley High School, our sister city in Hartford, with both their high school and their middle school marching band, and Weathersfield, I mean Windsor Fife and Drum Corps. We have a very large contingent of dignitaries this year, highlighted by Lieutenant Governor Nancy Wyman, both of our United States Senators, Senator Richard Blumenthal and Senator Chris Murphy, as well as United States Congressman John Larson. We also will have state Senators Paul Doyle and John Fonfarra, as well as retired Senator Billy Ciata, and State Representatives Russ Moore and Tony Guerrero, as well as members of the town council, of course, the mayor, the town manager, members of the Board of Education. And one invited member of our dignitary group is a young woman. Her name is Alexis Meyer. She's an eighth-grade student at the Silas Dean Middle School, and she is the winner of this year's essay contest, which we conduct at Silas Dean Middle School, the eighth graders. We had about 24 students participating this year, and Alexis was determined to be our winner. She will read her essay at the Village Cemetery. Immediately, and that really, this parade is really the celebration of Memorial Day. Very similar to the celebrating the 300th anniversary of Weathersfield. But then, the parade, the Memorial Day Committee shifts the emphasis to a very solemn and dignified ceremony that's held at the Village Cemetery. We honor the men of Weathersfield from World War I, World War II, Korea, and Vietnam who lost their lives and lived here in Weathersfield and lost their lives. Names that you are familiar because their families have continued to live here in town over the many, many years, and that is our tribute to those men who gave their lives. And then, in addition to that, we read the names of every veteran who was a resident or associated with the town of Weathersfield who died in his past year, from April 2012 till March 31st of 2013, as one last tribute to serving their country and to say thank you for their service. And that's what our service at the Village Cemetery is all about, to really celebrate the solemnity of Memorial Day celebration. Our featured guest speaker this year is Colonel Richard Blake. He's a retired colonel. He was with the Connecticut Army National Guard, and he will give a brief Memorial Day address, as well as we'll have some patriotic music being played there. Former Mayor Dan Camilleri is our master ceremonies, and we will have, as I indicated, the role, reading of the Roll of Honors and patriotic music. We conclude the ceremony with a salute to the dead, which is a 21-gun salute, and then playing of the Taps, and then raising the American flag at the Village Cemetery, and that concludes our parade. So I'd like to invite all the members, all the citizens of Weathersfield and the surrounding communities to come on out Saturday morning. I just heard on the news this evening that the weather's supposed to be very cooperative. A little bit of rain scheduled this week, but Saturday and Sunday, as well as Monday, looked pretty nice. Temperatures in the low 70s. The parade route that I announced is very beautifully tree-lined, as many places here in our town are, but Garden Street, Main Street, and Broad Street, plenty of areas to bring picnic chairs and sit down and enjoy the parade, and I'd like to invite all of you. I want to thank the town council for, not only their financial support that makes this possible, but for all of the assistance that they rendered to us, both from certain members of the council around our committee. They worked very hard to put this all together, along with other members, and we do this because, number one, we're proud of our town, and we use this as a tribute to the men and women who serve our country and continue to serve our country, placing their lives in harm's way so that we might enjoy the freedoms of our country. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Larry. Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good evening. Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. Two weeks ago, I was notified that $500 assessment for the new sidewalk was overdue. The assessment was payable as of October 4th, 2010. The work was completed in 2012, and the notices went out on October 4th, 2010, two years before the work was completed. Pay before you receive the work, I guess. That's the way things are done in Weathersfield. This time, I received two notices of exactly the same information. One regular mail costing .46, and the other registered mail costing $3.56. I don't know why. I mean, you know, I'm not really trying to run out of time. Two notices, exactly the same day, exactly the same thing. My neighbor received the same notices and was very upset. You see, she received the notice at the proper address, but the name was of the previous owner that moved out, you know, four or five years ago. I don't understand. Four or five years ago, somebody moved out. Great efficiency in town, I guess. Maybe there's no accountability. Going back to the sidewalk. On numerous occasions, I have requested for a legal opinion from our town attorney regarding the legality of this assessment. To this day, I have not received any. I mean that arbitrary assessment, when in town on numerous occasion, property owners have received new walk without getting assessed for it. Let me remind you again that the walk, like the road, is untamed property. The walk, like the road, is public. The walk is there not because the property owner requested it, but because the town decided that we need it. Now, I do not mind removing the snow from the walk or do small repair to it, but to get assessed for a public walk is fundamentally wrong. How long would it take before the town assesses the property owner for reconstructing streets? How long would it take before the town assesses the property owner for reconstructing streets? Or ask the property owner to remove snow on each side of the street? After all, there is no difference in ownership for the two. Since not every street in town does have a walk, I believe the assessment is unfair and unjust. Now I want to ask the town manager, how can I keep the grass strip between the curb and sidewalk green and in good shape? Now let me remind you that the contractor never followed the design plan as prepared by the town. See, the detail on the construction plans called for, so cut and remove excess pavement. Excess pavement. This was never done. And yes, the pavement consists of four inches of bituminous concrete, an eight-inch of processed stone, and six-inch gravel for a total depth of 18 inches. This was never removed. I remember the contractor breaking the pavement behind the curb with a jackhammer. This work was done after the curbing was in place and should have been done before the placement of the new curb. But I do not remember removing and backfilling with the appropriate material. I wonder if he received payment for removing the excess material. Now I ask, can you grow grass on stone and gravel? I don't think so. It's going to be very hard. Switching a little bit, I attended the Board of Education meeting on May 14th and was very disappointed with the lack of respect between the town council and the Board of Education. The tone, the insinuation, the accusation of the town boards is an embarrassment to the town. The 17 hours spent on workshop was felt to be an enormous amount of time by the board, and they repeated more than once. 17 hours. While I believe that 17 hours spent on a budget of $53 million is unsatisfactory, in private business, many more hours are spent before investing such large sum of money. Yes, I do use the word investing because I hear over and over again that the money is spent for the students, even though 82% of the budget goes to salaries and benefits. It sure looks like town government is more concentrated on the town and their own political agenda than on matters that concern the residents. Thank you for the opportunity to let me talk.
Thank you, Mr. Colantonio. Are there other members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Young?
Good evening. Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. First of all, I'd like to mention that with the current budget, the finalizing of the budget, reducing $325,000 from the board's side, I think was a total disaster to the citizens of this town. Furthermore, no reduction to this town's side is another disaster in waiting. My understanding is, from the budget hearings, if you're going to buy pickup trucks, dump trucks, finance them. You need $200,000 for a fire engine that's going to be financed or paid over a period of time. You just keep, we have our school that's going to cost us a lot of money. The citizens are putting up with high water bills. My water bill keeps going up. I don't know why. But I think it's, but I don't think your water bill went down. I think it went down with the MDC. And I think that might have been the payoff to shift it to us. But, that's my opinion. But, the thing is, Mayor, I think that we are heading down, and we continue to head down, a bad path of tax, borrow, and spend. And it's been going on. If we had the three people down the end as a majority, we would have the same problem. There isn't any difference between one party and the other party, as far as I can see. There isn't any balance of power or check in this town. It's terrible. But that might be Connecticut, because as we look at the state of Connecticut, it's the same kind of ideas up there. We need to come up with some ideas of saving money and reducing costs. How many times has been talked about shared services? But that'll never happen. I know the superintendent, and I mentioned this, superintendent thinks he's doing his fair share of shared services by buying electric or gas, or whatever it might be, through some groups. But we could directly affect the town's side and the Board of Education's side by reducing costs, by consolidating efforts, which I don't know why you're not doing. You have no problem taxing and continuing to tax, and no will to reduce costs. And this is, this is not good for the people of this town. We have still, an anemic real estate market. I know Mr. Montanari thinks it's fantastic. Go look at some of those numbers. Out of 10, you have two or three that are involved with foreclosures. You have other people selling their homes just to get out from under them. They're not making any money. They're just losing money or going zero difference from what they paid to what they unload for. That is not a good market. We need to see our prices of our homes go up. And the way you do that is to reduce your taxes and make it a desirable community for people to want to come and live and not get squeezed to death by high taxes. I know I've talked about this time and time again, and we continue to come up with budgets, 2%, 3%, I don't care how many percent of this. It should have been a negative, Mayor. It should have gone backwards. Because the economy calls for it, and the economy has called for it for a long time, but not in this town, not in this state. Obviously, when you do need money, you just call up Hartford and they borrow more money. And that's how this whole town, this whole community, this whole state lives on borrowed money. As you know, as of last night and today, well, as of last night, we heard about a very bad train wreck down on the coast, which is going to cost a lot of money to repair. We just saw on the news tonight out in Oklahoma City devastation. And that devastation, somewhere the money's got to come from. If we had that, and we have had the tornado, did we have the ability to take care of our own problems? No. You had to call up FEMA. We got to call up somebody else and ask for help. And you just cannot maintain our own abilities. We just saw some pictures tonight of people back in the olden days, and they managed for themselves. They struggled, and they fought, and they saved, and they had to pay. They didn't have federal government sending them money. If it was, it was so extremely little. But today, we're so dependent. We're so dependent on give me, gimme, gimme, and someone's got to pay the bill. And, you know, as we continue with our school system that has been a disaster, you continue to fund it like it's a fantastic school system. If you noticed, I've noticed in Hartford Current, the town of Rocky Hill now is going to be getting a magnet school, and as you know, they're popping up all over. And what's going to happen, Mayor, is those magnet schools are going to take your, our students. They're going to filter all around, and we're going to end up being left with empty buildings or a building. And what are we going to do with that? It's going to be in great shape, but it's going to be, we're going to be, we're going to be on the losing end of the stick because our own local education system has been a failure and continues to be a failure, and it's supported and is not brought back up into shape where it should be. And this is, this is what's wrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Sekus?
Please, the microphone's right over there.
Lee Sekus, 117 Wells Road. I'm concerned about, you could say, waste of money maybe, or how our money's being spent. We had a lot of work being done by the MDC, some of it just, much of which was needed. But what is frustrating me is we also talked in the past about paving roads and repaving roads. Now, from the comments of a resident on Stillwood Road, and we could ask Doris about Cotwell Road, both those roads, I believe, were repaved within the past three or four years. Yet, they're roads that have been unpaved for over 20 years, and we are paving roads that were just recently paved. Who is working with the MDC to make sure the money that we are paying for this job is being used efficiently and properly? Because other people have roads that are more in need of it than the roads that are being done. And I just like to know who is really overseeing them, Mr. Turner? Is there a connection between the MDC and the town, or they just have a free will? That's my question. And hopefully, we'll have a nice weather like Larry Spelcy said for our parade on Saturday, and hopefully, we can get this town back into improvement again like it should be and it will be if we work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sekus. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to council reports. Are there any reports of committees? Jeff, you may.
If I may, thank you, Mayor. We had a Public Safety Committee meeting several weeks back, and it was concerning the Greenfield Park, Greenfield Recreation Area, and some concerns that a lot of the residents have that live in that area over activity that's coming in from groups of people from outside the town that are using the park. In attendance was the town mayor, the assistant town mayor, I'm sorry, town manager, assistant town manager, Chief Sutran, Kathy Bagley, and the committee itself. And the staff is putting together some recommendations of what we can do to straighten that situation out and to make that a little bit better living place, I guess, for the community so they're not too concerned over what's been happening there. And if I missed anything, the people on the committee, please chime in, but I think that was kind of the main point of the whole meeting that night. So we're just waiting to hear back from the town manager and others, what we can do moving forward. Probably have more information at the next meeting. Thank you.
Just as a follow-up, two of the, three of the takeaways I took away from the meeting was, we're going to craft an ordinance that says if a street is not otherwise posted, the speed limit's 25.
Right.
That was out the recommendation of Chief Sutran. We've already submitted to the State Department of Transportation a request to make the speed limit on Greenfield 25 miles an hour. So waiting to hear back from that. And I reached out to the citizen in the neighborhood, whose name you gave me, and let them know that we'd be coordinating some neighborhood meetings.
Perfect. Thank you. And thank you, Chief and Kathy, for also helping out, and I appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
Any other committee reports? Council comments? Council staff comments? Just a couple. Was able to attend the Weatherfield Advisory Committee on Persons with Disabilities meeting last Wednesday. They had an award made for the Jets team and their work with students and members with disabilities. And they presented the award, and I was able to attend and read a proclamation from the town for the Jets team. The committee's been very supportive of the Jets team and has given them recommendations for types of inventions and devices that would be helpful for members with disabilities. And also was able to attend the town employee luncheon on the 16th and read a proclamation from the governor for Physical Services Week, which is being celebrated this week. Any other council comments? Mr. Town Manager?
I have nothing further.
Not a town clerk? I guess there's one thing at our place is, we do have a communication from Mr. Warren, another message. Did everybody get that?
No.
No.
Okay. I will pass this around. It is similar to the one that we received before. So I'll start passing. Next on the agenda is council action. Number 1A, we don't have any resignations or appointments.
No.
Number 1C, 31 Kimberly Road, action on resolution requesting approval of the abandonment of a portion of two-rod highway abutting 31 Kimberly Lane. Can I have a motion, please?
It's a resolution concerning the abandonment of a portion of two-rod highway abutting 31 Kimberly Lane to Kevin Martin, subject to any and all utility easements and rights which may exist at a time of conveyance.
Second.
Madam Town, Mr. Town Manager? Sorry.
Jumping right in.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I'll ask Town Engineer Mike Turner to review this item with you. Mr. Mike Turner?
Sorry.
Everything's good.
Thank you, Mayor and town councilors. As Mr. Martin pointed out, what we're asking to do is abandon a portion of the former or old location of two-rod highway that sits on the northerly side of that big grass island that folks are familiar with by the corner of Kits Lane. Mr. Martin bought the home on Kimberly, 31 Kimberly, and the road right away in that location used to curve off to the north rather than just continue straight. So upon his construction of his house, what he finds is that entire area leaves the entire backyard with virtually no privacy at all. So at the, at his request, we did consider several options, and at our town attorney's recommendation, he felt the best way to do it would be to abandon a portion of that highway. If that road were ever abandoned, he would get this property anyway, because typically you split it down the middle and the lane goes to either side. So he felt that this was the most appropriate way. The Town Planning and Zoning Commission endorsed it, and NURIT 24 recommendation as well.
Any questions of Mr. Turner? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1D, the CPACE program, action on a resolution approving the commercial property assessed clean energy CPACE agreement. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution that's submitted, and the attached resolution is several pages long.
I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. The CPACE program is a program approved through the legislature last year, and it's managed and administered through the Clean Energy Finance and Investment Authority. And what it does is, the authority reaches out to lenders who create a pot of money for commercial, industrial, and multifamily projects to provide retrofits for clean energy solutions to their properties. And then the repayment of those are put on the tax bills as part of their property taxes. So it allows the owner to provide the necessary financing to upgrade their facility. All the vetting of the program, all the improvements, all the actual work, other than issuing building permits, is monitored and financed through the state. So our obligation as a town is to receive the assessments and put them on the tax bill. Then we send the money to the state for them to pay the lenders. So that would be our participation in the financing of the program. Several towns throughout Connecticut have already done this, and it does provide a mechanism where these properties can get the financing backed up by the state.
Any questions of the town manager? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you. Under 3, other business. A, school resource officer grant authorization to apply for and accept if awarded. A grant from the U.S. Department of Justice for a school resource officer for the Silas Dean Middle School. A motion, please?
I'll motion to authorize the town manager to apply for and accept if awarded COPS hiring grant. if awarded a cops hiring grant for a school resource officer at the Silas Dean Middle School.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. At this time, I'd like Assistant Town Manager Rand Palmer and Chief Sutran and his staff to review this item with you.
Hello?
Hello.
Do you have any questions, or should I just give you what we wrote? The synopsis?
Why don't you just give us a synopsis for us, I think, at this point?
This is the justification for it. Acceptance of this grant will allow the hiring of one additional police officer. Subsequent assignment to a school resource officer at the Silas Dean Middle School. The SRO would provide physical security to protect the students from outside and internal safety and wellness threats. The SRO would integrate with the school learning process and present safety education resources, outreach programs, and other youth referral services. The SRO would be charged with community policing and problem solving involving youths in town, developing solutions for youths' problems, and assessing the effectiveness of the solutions. The SRO would also be charged with monitoring at-risk youths, both offenders and victims, and coordinating with proper police, school, social service agencies to ensure proper follow-up with addressing issues concerning said youth. The cost would be spread out over three years, funded by the grant and the town, and then the fourth year would be 100% funded by the town. There's a gap that we have between, because we have there in the elementary schools, and we have police officers there, and there's a great, you know, that learning aspect of the youths with the police officers. They're not afraid of the police officers. They become friends with the police officers, and they realize that that's a source of help if they ever need it in the future. But the gap is that middle school that we have between the elementary school and then eventually with the SRO that we have at the high school. So this is what we're trying to do, is to fill that gap. I think it'll go a long way to help us with some of the youth problems that we've had in the past. When they develop those friendships, we do get information that helps us in investigations later on that could be very fruitful for us. And this is a way of doing actually two things at the same time, enhancing the security at the school and developing that coordination with the kids.
Any questions of the chief? Council Drake?
Yeah, this will go under your budget? Is that what, this will be your police budget?
Yes.
And just for the SRO and the high schools, is that under your budget, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Any, Council Cocken?
The officer would, while school's in session, would the officer be at the school pretty much the full school day?
Yes.
And then during vacations would be, it sounds like you described some of what the officer would be doing when he or she's not inside the school.
Well, there is some lesson planning and stuff like that. But no, once the school is out of session, he would come back to us and patrol, where we could use him.
Okay.
For her.
And this, the officer, I think we put money into the budget to pay the first, the entire first-year cost, correct?
We put in a portion of the town share. We anticipate by the time they award the grant and we hire the officer that the first, the full first year will not occur within the next fiscal year. So we did an estimate of how much money we thought we would need to cover that. And again, it's just an estimate, because we don't know how quickly cops will act, the cops office. So it would just be a portion of our share, which would probably cover the first couple of months.
So there'd be a step, I guess, a step up in year two, right? Because you'd have a full year at that point.
Yes, and we would have to budget that in the next fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Council McAllister?
I have a question. I'm not familiar. Do we have an SRO in a middle school, or have we ever had one before?
No.
Okay, so this is for three years, we're going to get the federal grant.
Right.
In year four, are we thinking we're going to keep this officer, and are we going to apply for another grant?
We would have to keep the officer. That's the agreement with the federal government for that fourth year. After that, it's up to you guys.
So we would pay the full amount the fourth year? And then after that, we can make a decision?
Yes.
Council Roberts?
What will be the authorized strength of the department with this person? I can't remember off the top of my head.
Forty-eight.
Thank you. Any other questions? Deputy Mayor?
Chief, do we always look for other grants as we move forward? I mean, you're constantly, you and I know Rayan are always looking for other types of grants to offset some of these costs as we, so maybe on the fourth year or the fifty, the full impact wouldn't be there from the town? Is that possible? Is that a correct statement to make, or?
I'll let the grant expert.
I think it's unlikely that we'll get a salary grant, to be honest, after the fourth year. I think, you know, our chances of getting this are pretty good, given everything that's happened. But, you know, I don't see us getting salary grant. You know, we don't have the, kind of the beauty statistics of an inner-city, fortunately, so it makes it harder for us to continue to get salary funds.
Thank you.
Council McAllister?
Just a thought. I mean, in four years, when we do have to decide on extending it and no grants are available, it might be beneficial between now and then if this does pass. Just to keep track of the soft benefits, I know we can't measure something, but if we do have leads and we do have cases closed and stuff like that, so when it comes back...
The SRO actually does a report every year, an annual report, that you guys get, too, from the high school, and you'll see a lot of the work that they've done there.
Okay.
And it'll be the same way with the middle school.
So we'll get a specific one for the middle school?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Thank you.
One other thing, I do want to mention that Greenfield, we did put up the signs so there's no parking in that driveway access. Kathy Bagley took care of that. We took care of the signs, but she took care of getting them. And we also put up a camera that is kind of unique. It yells at people at certain times. So if someone's there after dark, after the park closes, it yells at them and says, "We're taking your picture, and you better leave." So I think that will take a big chunk out of the complaints that we were getting from there.
Interesting.
Thank you. Just if I may, just again, I just want to thank you and Kathy and the Town Manager and the Assistant Town Manager for taking action. I think the community there is very appreciative of the whole thing. So thank you.
Okay. Next is 3B, lighting replacement program, changes in the agreement for lighting improvements at the community center. Can I have a motion?
Motion to authorize the Town Manager to execute an amendment to the Energy Efficiency Lighting Program Agreement for the Pickin Community Center to reduce the amount of replacement lighting.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Rayan? She left. But we went through a process with CL and B.
She's back.
It's all right. Your favorite topic. To upgrade the LED and fixtures in certain buildings. The community center, we did, but because of the electric system there, they couldn't support the LED lights. And the original proposal agreement was based upon the LEDs system, so they had to amend the agreement. It costs us less, but the return is less. The lights they did put in, they do save energy, but they're not the LEDs. So this is an amendment to that agreement to, for the new lighting and for the amended costs.
Any questions of the Town Manager? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Thank you.
Epstein.
Okay, thank you. For a bid waiver for Loretta's Dream Picnic Pavilion, a motion, please?
I'll motion to authorize a bid waiver and contract award for the purchase of a picnic pavilion for Millwoods Park to Creative Recreation in the amount of $41,694.
Second?
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. At this time, I'd like Kathy Bagley to come forward to review this item with you.
Good evening. I'm here tonight for the bid waiver for the Loretta's Picnic Pavilion. We've been working with the fundraising committee now over the past, probably a year and a half, to look at different pavilion types. They've raised all the money for it. We're ready to go, and they've been doing a lot of research on the type of picnic pavilion they would like to see. And we've also, from the department's side, been working with them as far as the type of picnic pavilion we'd like to see in the park. And we've come to a great, after many hours of work, a great recommendation with the company, and we're ready to go with it. And we would ask you for the bid waiver, based on all the research that has been done with the different vendors.
Any questions of Kathy?
If I may. When this is finished, is this for use of anyone in the town that wants to use the pavilion? Is that how it works? Or do you have to rent it, or how?
A little bit of both.
Okay.
It will be open, but we will be working with the Loretta's Dream Committee also, just for what they would like to see. But also, as they do in other towns, renting it out for family picnics and things of that nature, so people could have a really nice picnic in the park. But also having it available, we always talked about just having it available, because it's right next to the bocce courts, the playground area, the Little League field, the softball field. It's actually in a great part of the park, so it would be a mix of both.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Council Cocken?
Thank you. Kathy, the entire cost is paid for by Loretta's Dream, correct?
That is correct.
And then is, I assume, is there some sort of, there must be a warranty on this facility?
Yes.
Do you know what it is, by any chance?
Good question.
Because I assume once it's built, it's going to be our responsibility to maintain it, right?
Definitely. It's certainly, we got it as maintenance-free as we possibly could get. I could get that information to you. I'm not sure I could find it.
Okay.
But I'll look for it in my paperwork.
Okay. I'm assuming there is some sort of...
Yeah, it's at least one year or two years, and I just would rather look it up and get back to you on that.
Council Drake?
Yeah, similar question to Jeff. The two-by-six flooring, is that just pressure-treated, or so? Or what is that made out of?
For the roof.
The flooring?
The flooring is going to be a concrete foundation.
Oh, because it says roofing is two-by, okay. It's just the roof decking, okay, very good.
Any other questions?
As you know, we, the group received, or actually the town's receiving, $50,000 in addition to this for the pavilion and the surround of the pavilion. It was a state grant. So in addition to this $41,000 out of $50,000, that will go towards site preparation, finishing this out, electric support, electric to the site, benches and other things.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Pretty big, isn't it?
Robert, do you have a question?
No, it was just a comment that I think the Loretta's Dream Committee should be commended for their hard work and their fundraising, because this is going to be a great addition to Millwoods. And, you know, something everyone in town will probably be able to use. And it's just going to be a great addition and really add to the aesthetics of that part of Millwoods. So I think we should thank them for taking this project under their wing.
Thank you. Any other? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Number five is a resolution for introduction at the next meeting, the youth services grant. We will have a public hearing on that resolution at the next meeting. Next is number six, minutes of the budget hearing for April 15, 2013. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes for April 15, 2013.
Second.
Thank you. Any corrections, additions, deletions?
Is that the one that's on the disk? Because there wasn't a hard copy in here.
You have hard copies. You received them for your last meeting, but we didn't have enough people in attendance. So that's why it came back this time.
It's the previous one?
Right.
Thank you, Dolores.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
I think Council Roberts and Council Drake were not here.
Okay. Thank you. The regular meeting minutes from May 6, 2013, a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting for May 6, 2013.
And a second?
Second.
Any corrections, additions, deletions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions?
Epstein.
Are you all set?
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. And the special meeting of May 8, a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting, May 8, 2013.
Second.
A second? Thank you. Any corrections, additions, deletions?
On page three, the last motion, it says Council McAllister moved. I think that was Council Manusos on the web tennis courts.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, on page three?
On page three. The last Council McAllister moved to resolve that the budget is, it's Council Manusos.
I'm sorry. Oh, it's maybe it's here. Yeah, okay. Tennis courts. This is the tennis courts, Council Manusos.
Oh, it says Council McAllister in the...
Yeah.
Okay. So it's right in the hard copy.
It's correct, yes.
It's corrected.
Okay. Any other corrections? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is public comments. Are there members of the public? Mr. Colantonio? Oh, one clarification.
Just one clarification. Kathy Bagley informs me that the warranty period is 10 years on many manufacturers' defect.
On the Loretta's Dream?
On the pavilion.
Good evening again. Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. Going back a few meetings now, that the Town Manager said that the intersectional site distance to St. Tifton and Morrison Avenue, after probably a year of measurement, going back and forth. And he stated that Gus was right, but the town was not wrong. I never knew what it meant, but anyway. If Gus was right with the dimension, which was 240, eventually the town measured to 32, that's only good for 21 miles per hour. The design speed, the posted speed is 25 on my street, and the 85th percentile, it's going 31 miles per hour. Nothing is done. 31 miles per hour, it's 50% higher than what that intersection is good for. Again, 21 miles versus 31. Now, a few meetings ago, like I said, the Town Manager said that I was right, but I never found out where is the town going to go from there? Are we going, are they going to review it? Are we going to get a stop sign? Are we going to remove the stop sign on the hill crest? I mean, what's going on? You know, how many questions do we, or how many times do we have to ask a question before we're going to get anything? Thank you.
If I may? Thank you. Go ahead.
The intersectional site distance, according to the police, even the number you used, which we verified, the town had a starting point of 15 feet back from the intersection. So our site distance number was correct. Your measurement was from a different set point back from the intersection, so your number is right. But both of them, after reviewed by the engineering department and the police department, do not warrant a stop sign. And I'll be happy to discuss this with you in the morning. Thank you.
Other members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Young?
Good evening. Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. Tonight, you spoke about another resource officer now for the middle school. That's going to be another fixed cost going out. Yeah, you're going to get some funding from the feds and the town. And as time goes on, four years now, it's going to be a full-time employee. It's another fixed cost. Again, as I've said, there's no controlling here of our costs. And why do we need an SRS or SRO at the middle school? These are just young, small people. Are they, is it overrun by thugs or something like that? To need a police person in there? I mean, what's going on with our school? I mean, what's going on with our school? I've criticized the school system long enough, and here you bring in an officer to the high school, now you're bringing an officer into the middle school. It validates what I've been saying. No control. Spend like tomorrow, and nobody cares.
Mr. Young, I think the police chief clarified the purpose of bringing an officer into the middle school. There is dare officers in the elementary school setting that work with the children in the elementary school. There's an SRO at the high school. There is not an SRO at the middle school. This would narrow that gap and work to develop those relationships, positive relationships between the police and the students, that they have developed already through the elementary school and continue that through the high school.
But he did call him a resource officer.
Correct.
Which is what you have over at the high school.
Correct.
So having more of these people, I mean, you're just bringing more people on board and just burdening the taxpayer. Be cutting these things down. There was some mention tonight about some kind of mechanism to provide money for companies. I think the Town Manager spoke about that. Why not just lower taxes?
It's private money. It's private money.
Is it private money?
Yeah, it's private money.
Okay, well, then that's good. Consider the fact you're still lowering taxes.
Private lenders lending money. Private lenders lending money.
So where does your involvement come in?
Just as we stated, that the repayments are put on the tax bills, and we remit that money to the state, who then pays the private lender back their money.
So the state pays them back?
Yes. Actually, the company pays them back.
Oh, okay. Okay, good. Now, also, tonight, I spoke about the fire engine a little bit, that you're planning on buying, and no referendum. $800,000 fire engine with no referendum. I thought we had in our bylaws or our, whatever you call that, charter, over $200,000 or more, purchase, you should be having a referendum. Why aren't we having a referendum on this fire engine? Because we're only paying $200,000 for the next four years? And you figure that you don't have to? If you recall, the Weathersfield Taxpayers Association took the Town to Superior Court some, back in 2004, 2005, over the issue of why there was not a referendum. And the decision was, there had to be a referendum. Now, why isn't there one for this? This is 800,000, it's more than 200,000. I would hope that you would consider putting this out next November for the citizens to vote on, instead of doing like the people down the other end tried to do back then, at 1.1 million or 1.2 million dollars in turf. They didn't want to give us a referendum either, but you had to give it to us because the Superior Court said so. So I would hope that you would put that in your plans, Mayor, for the citizens to at least vote on that fire engine. Tonight, you had mentioned that you had a letter from Mr. Warren, correct? Mr. Warren is a very loyal citizen with an advanced military background, and I know he's been sounding the alarm for a long time about social, financial, different types of problems, not only in Weathersfield but elsewhere. And I think he has a lot of good common sense, and I think he has some good counsel to share with you folks, and I hope that you take his words very seriously. I think Mr. Warren, he's an old soldier, and he deserves, and I think he deserves the respect, and he also has the background of many, many years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session?
Second.
So we're going to, instead of, I'm sorry, can we withdraw the motion for executive session? The Town Attorney won't be here until 8:30, so we'll take a short recess.
Okay.
Until 8:30, and then we'll have a motion to go into executive session.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Chris, how are you? How's it going, all right?